Called to the regular common council meeting, Monday, January 21st, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation, appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, January 18th. Agenda's posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next item is a public hearing. Council will hear comments regarding a request by the City of Edgerton to modify its fair schedule for the share, ride, taxi program. Background before we open up the public hearing.
Page four and five of your packet, and six is background information on this. Six is the email that started the conversation with our service provider suggesting that due to declining use and some strategic increases in rates, we could cover some of those costs. The legal notice on page five describes changes that have been made in the recent past as well as provide notice to the public that we're considering these changes. The changes being proposed are an increase in rates for elderly disabled from 225 to 250, out-of-town mileage rates from 2 to 225, agency delivery fare from $7 to $9, and adult regular fares from 350 to 450, although the legal notice did not include the section for adult regular fares for that dollar increase because it minimally increased our annual income. And so in conversations with the mayor, we did not include that increase in the legal notice, and we had just increased those rates last year.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on the shared ride taxi program modifying the fair schedule? I don't see anybody, so we will officially close the public hearing and move on to consider modifications to the fair schedule for the shared ride taxi program.
I'll make a motion to approve modifications to the fair ride schedule for the shared ride taxi program.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is personal appearances for non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience that wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from January 7th.
Motion to approve minutes from January 7th.
Second. Any corrections or additions?
Yes, the second page of the minutes, the second paragraph, just a typo, David Issa's name. You see that, Cindy?
Yeah, to avoid confusion.
Thank you, that's all I had.
With the correction?
Oh, I'll keep the motion with the correction.
Yep, same here. Any other corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Finance committee, Mark.
Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $2,837,733.58.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Sounds kinda high, but taxes are being paid this month for the receivables, so must we spend that every quarter, or every two weeks?
You do not.
A lot.
Okay. Motion to approve the bills and payroll, roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no licenses tonight, so I'll move on to three and make a motion to adopt City Vedderan Resolution 2-19, authorizing the 2018 property tax equivalent charged to be charged to the water utility.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to approve a facade grant for 106 South Main Street, Edgerton Outreach, in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve a facade grant for 15 North Henry Street in the amount of $1,646.55.
Second.
Any discussion? Other than there's a business after hours there this week, new business and town ribbon cutting thing. Roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Abstain.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to allow staff to put out an RFP for the business vacant business land property while maintaining the current lease agreement.
Second. Go ahead. Did you get a second then, one of them? Okay. Any discussion? No, it's a good thing that we're doing RFP on that, it's been a while, so. Anyone else? Roll call.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have for finance.
Thank you. Utility, anything to bring forward?
Nothing to bring forward from utility.
Reclined.
Okay, public works.
On our last meeting, we talked about removal of the island on Hemp Hill Avenue. We did receive a letter from Joan Fox and Ron Webb stating that they would gift the completion of the project to the city at no cost. There was a lot of discussion about it, and I believe that we moved to bring it to the common council.
It is a line item here, so.
Number two, consider approving the second reading of the, and adopting the City of Edgerton ordinance 18-07, admitting section 9.07 speed zones to reduce the speed limit on Dickinson Avenue. Did we have some issues with that, that we were gonna look into that further?
Yes, in your staff report, there's some information in your packet as well as some information at your place there provided by the police department.
Okay. Could you give us some background information on that, or give us, review that with us then?
The items the staff was to investigate was to determine when the speed rail would be here, I guess in case it could assist with this analysis. It won't be here for a while, so probably it won't be timely. The review of the statutory limitations around speed limits and signing. The statutes do allow the city to establish the speed on streets adjacent to parks at 15 miles an hour, only when children are present. So we would have to, if to do that, you would have to have an ordinance, you would have to post signs at the speed limit change points, and it's only enforceable when children are present. If you were to decide to sign the entire street, you would, if the city decides to make the entire street 15, the council should discuss if all streets around the park will be 15, or if it's just Dickinson. And 15 mile an hour signs would have to be posted as you enter the street from all directions. So in this case, there are lots and lots of streets in this little section that join, so the signing would be quite extensive that it would be required, so people would know that you're entering 15 miles an hour at the park. And the last thing is the statistics, and Officer Meehan here is here to answer any questions about the data he's provided to you at your place.
I have one question, if I could. What is the definition of a fasted vehicle? Is that a speeding vehicle?
That's correct. That's the fastest vehicle observed on that roadway during that timeframe.
Okay, so that's only one vehicle, on each, each one of those line items is one vehicle, indicating the speed of that vehicle?
Exactly, that is the fastest vehicle during that time.
Okay, thank you.
There's another item, the second one, bullet point down, almost two-thirds of all vehicles traveling on Dickinson, all the occurrences of Dickinson would be spelled with a K-I-N, using it as a cut through, using Chamberlain, George, and Hubert. Would the absence of any data on George and on Hubert, that serve the city well, or would the gathering of data on George and on Hubert make this issue of one and a half properties on Dickinson, or maybe two at the most, that that traffic going from Maine to Chamberlain, or from Chamberlain to Maine, and using George Street, they're only using Dickinson for a couple of houses?
You lost me on the first part of your question.
The, the lack of data on George Street and on Hubert, would that not help us, or would it help us to have the data?
Well, the more data you have, obviously, in my opinion, would help you make a decision. I collected data only on the vehicles traversing Dickinson. I did count vehicles that traversed across Dickinson from Chamberlain, or from Hubert, or George Street, but generally speaking, the short distances they were on there, I was unable to collect any speed data on them, because it was well under 20 miles an hour.
I'm just having a feeling that Dickinson itself is not the issue, except for from Hubert to Elm Street, where most of the traffic, either northbound or southbound, using Hubert or using Dickinson all the way to Maine, they were mostly coming from Elm Drive.
You are correctly identifying the most vehicles that traversed past the park came from Elm Drive, or were residents who lived on Dickinson themselves, about one-third of the vehicles.
And so the passing of the park was either on Hubert or on Dickinson, but as far as splitting the traffic and saying only counting the cars that were on Chamberlain and Hubert, they were only on Dickinson for that short little stretch, and so trying to make an enforcement for that small of an occurrence, and that small of a distance, I think we're actually barking up the wrong tree, and Dickinson isn't the problem, it's Chamberlain to Hubert using George.
Chamberlain Street, in my opinion, appears to be the biggest problem. Most cars that are identified in, number of vehicles turning, either came off of Chamberlain and turned on to George, or came off of Hubert and turned on to Chamberlain.
And it's only in a few spot instances where I was actually there and parked, and just to observe, and having no official capacity, just curious what was going on, and watching the cars coming from Chamberlain going to the rolling stop, but I also observed cars going westbound on Hubert, and going, and doing a rolling stop onto Dickinson.
That's also correct, I observed the same thing, or most of the cars, the problem was on Chamberlain coming onto Dickinson.
Right.
Based probably statistically, because there's more cars traversing Chamberlain than there was Hubert.
Okay. Well, that clears a lot up, and I just have a feeling that if data were collected on George and on Hubert, both the stub of Hubert that goes west of George, and Hubert proper going to Maine, if data were collected on that, you would see a split in the traffic turning right onto Dickinson from Hubert, and traffic turning left onto George from Hubert.
I didn't collect it as data, but my observations were the people who were traversing Hubert Street off of Main Street generally turned right and entered Elm. They weren't counted as vehicles who passed the park.
Okay.
Generally speaking, the vehicles who came off of North Main Street, short portion of Hubert, and then came down George Street, most likely turned and went up Chamberlain. They did not, they did not go on to Dickinson and park.
Right. It's almost to the point of wanting to redirect all of our energies toward George Street and put the restriction in speed, which would impact a minimal number of residents, and would also put a damper on using Chamberlain as a freeway to get to Maine, because primarily anyone whose target is Maine is gonna use George Street, they're not gonna go north on Dickinson and then turn right on Hubert, that just slows them down.
That's correct. People coming off of Chamberlain Street, the vast majority, if they were going northbound, took George Street, if they're gonna go southbound on Maine, they came down Dickinson and did not pass the park at all.
So now I'd turn to Bill and ask if putting a speed limit on George Street to 15 miles an hour of the entirety of George Street, would that have any implications one way or another, cost-wise and legality-wise?
I can't speak as to cost, but as to, well, I'm not sure if I understand the question as to cost. The cost in terms of signage would be, you'd need to post signs at the north and the south as you enter from Hubert or enter from Dickinson, that you're in a 15 mile an hour zone. That's really the extent of the signing.
Yes.
In terms of legality, you have the authority, not tonight, of course, because it's not noticed, but you have the general authority to make such a speed restriction of down to 15 miles per hour.
Thanks, Bill.
Hey, Chris, if the council wanted to put 15 just at the park area, you know, Dickinson Park?
That would cover the other side of Park 2, which would be George Street, wouldn't that be?
You know, say if the council decided to put 15 at a park, you know, on Dickinson Street only, would that would cover George Street? Because you have to post it.
Would that be the same effect, that's not noticed?
It's not noticed, but yes, all the rectory, you could notice, or you could adopt a restriction due to the park and post it accordingly, and that would affect a portion of Hubert, George, and Dickinson.
We were concentrating on Dickinson Street when we discussed this, but in retrospect, I think that we should include the entire park area, which would be the whole triangle area, which would include Hubert Street, George Street, and Dickinson Street.
Just hit the park area?
Well, that's gonna, I mean, you have to put the signs in advance of it, so that's, that would help.
I'd like to ask interim chief Meehan, is there any way we can get speeds on George, or is that kinda hard to get that, and then on Hubert, because of, I don't, I don't think there's anybody gonna hit 20 miles an hour on George to begin with, unless they're really on it, but, and then Hubert, you're coming up to the stop sign if you're heading west.
Yeah, time and distance on both of those roadways makes it pretty hard to collect data, especially if you're doing it in a squad car. You all follow the police car before you know how fun that is, and people tend to obey the rules, huh? So, I mean, it can be done, is it worth it? I would suggest the same thing that I observed earlier, is that those roadways are used to traverse and get to North Main Street, and most likely the distance that they're traveling on there, they're, they're probably not getting up to the speeds that can be seen on Dickinson. I'm not saying they can't, I'm just saying it's probably not going as fast as they are on Dickinson.
I have a question, could we use our PT Cruiser to be taking in the data on these things?
Yes, we can, good idea.
I don't know what you're talking about.
If you have an unmarked presence and therefore not affecting the trouble at speed.
Okay.
So I would recommend maybe we try that, then, if there's an issue. Obviously, you see a squad car, you're not gonna go down there 30, 40 miles an hour, so, if we were to go forward and examine that.
So it moves me to almost wanna make a motion, but I don't know enough about it, and I think that gathering the data is the next step. Well, we have a different motion on the floor right now.
The, there is no motion on the floor at the moment.
No, there isn't, okay.
It was not a formal motion made, and certainly no second.
Okay, so it's, at least it's still an agenda item here.
That is correct.
Are you, are you concerned with checking speeds on the other two streets, or on Dickinson?
Well, mainly, we already checked Dickinson, correct? I'm not concerned with the other streets, but I think if you're looking to do it anonymously, then I think a different vehicle would be the proper way to do it, but I, I don't see a concern there.
Is there a day or a time that this is from, this has been out for the past two years, without any data to know?
What we've heard is early in the morning and late in the afternoon, when people are going to work and school, and coming home from work and school, seems to be the majority of the problem.
Does that mean that there's not an issue in the summer? When there's no school? I'm wondering.
The work, too, I would imagine, some people.
The work, maybe, yes.
But those numbers are borne out here.
Yeah.
Is there a split in the traffic at Blaine and Chamberlain? In other words, the traffic going up to Hemp Hill and using that to get to Billy Wiggly or Subway from the school, would that fall off in the summer and then pick up again in the fall? And is that, is there a meaningful split there, where non-school lunch hour traffic is abiding by the speed limit? And it's only traffic heading to or from the schools that would be in excess of the posted limits?
You know, and I'm, it's interesting, I don't think we could gather that information, but, you know, is it main, is it school?
Yeah.
Or is it kids from school, or is it adults going to work?
I can offer an opinion.
Or is it just speeding in general? What's your take, Randy?
It's nothing you'd be able to gather.
Well, I think Officer Meehan might have something.
I can offer a pretty good opinion on that. I've observed the traffic flowing to the school for 30 years, and it's a significant difference when school is in session, and it's not always kids. Most of the people driving to that school are adults dropping off their younger kids.
Ah, okay.
However, so, the traffic flow on Chamberlain and through this neighborhood is directly affected by school being in session, okay? I would suggest that in the summertime, it would probably be reduced significantly. However, the stop sign violations I observed, the place came back to the people who live in the Pearl and Doty Street area and are traversing to work. They weren't, they weren't going to school.
I'd just like to mention two here, if I could, out of this observation from, that was reported here. I added up these vehicles, there's 426 vehicles that were clocked over a 10-day period, and out of those 426 vehicles, the highest speed clocked was 34 miles an hour. And out of those 426 vehicles over the 10 days, there was a total of eight vehicles that were speeding. There's actually a few instances where vehicles were under the speed limit. So to me, I'm not saying that, I'm suggesting this is a good thing, but I'm, I'd be willing to bet to say that this is common throughout the city. I mean, this is not an alarming situation to me, the way I look at it. I would say this is probably pretty average. So, I guess to me, looking at these, this report, I don't see really an alarming issue here.
Except, I would agree with you, except that there's a playground area there.
Correct.
And I think that's what this issue is, with, is the kids in that area.
That's where I'm at, at the playground.
I think.
Yes, that's what the concern may be.
Kids are in the playground in the morning while people are working. It's only a half a day here now.
Yep, I agree. Plus, it sounds as though it's, is it less in that park area, or is it, based on what you were saying, David, is it Chamberlain? You know?
Hey, Chris?
Which is no park area, of course.
Two data points that were significant were the Elm Drive, west to, west Hubert to north Dickinson, and eastbound Chamberlain to George. Those were the two larger data points, but I have to agree with Randy that the, most of the traffic was under the posted limits, and that no one was, no one was markedly in excess of posted limits during the time I was looking. It was just that the lion's share of traffic was doing those two things.
Well, Chief, you got two-thirds of the vehicles turned, you already said Chamberlain, George, and Hubert, so you probably weren't able to get much of a radar on those guys if they're coming up and turning, right?
Yeah, there was.
Out of the 426, I'm sure you didn't.
The fastest vehicle projected speeds that you see on there were vehicles from the number of vehicles passing the park. I was unable to collect any speed data on any vehicle that traversed across or traveled only a half a block in park.
Okay, so only a third of these vehicles even went through the park, other than Dickinson, other than turning one way or the other on George, which, and Hubert, which were by the park, okay?
Yes, no.
Dickinson doesn't look like the issue, no, or does?
No.
Well, no, it's just a center point, so, every vehicle there passed the park at some point, either on Dickinson, George, or Hubert. I only collected data on the one speeding on Dickinson, and this is just a small snippet of, and in the wintertime, you know?
Right.
So, you know, the data is what it is for the number of days that it was collected. I completely understand it was done during winter, but most important, I think what you gotta consider is it was done during school hours, and on the dates and times that when I was here in December, the people who lived on that area were complaining about. Okay, and that was the traversing on that roadway in the morning before work, the lunch crowd, or what was perceived to be the school kids during the noon hour, and the returning home from work. And I would agree, there was a lot more traffic on them roadways in the morning, going to work and coming home from work than I had ever imagined, sometimes two a minute, which is quite a bit. But I didn't find the speeding that we're talking about.
Dan, please, anyone that wishes to speak, state your name and address for the records, please.
I'm Dan Ranner, and I come from Hemp Hill, but I actually live off that town, but my, and I'm on 4806 West Harford, I was actually born, so I'm not in the city. But I just wanted to say that I travel Dickinson a lot, you know, at least a couple times a day. And I see there is a signing for the park, which is not adequate. The sign, when you're coming from Main Street to the park, the sign for the park is in the middle of the park, instead of before the park. So if I'm driving along, and I'm a stranger, and I see the sign, and I don't know if park is there, I don't pay no attention, there's nothing that tells me that there's a kids' park there until I'm halfway through the park. And I, and the other way, the signs aren't, you know, you got this little sign that says there's a park, a kids' park here, I don't really, I don't think that is, I know it's there, so I make sure I, but I don't know, but I'm just saying, I don't think the sign on one way has been proper, a lot, and the other way, it's really not much of a sign.
Well, that's a kind of a good point there, too, maybe post them in advance.
So, did we talk about this at the last meeting, as far as when the sign can be posted in relationship to where the park area is? So I think there's certain signage regulations, right?
But why wouldn't you have some municipal parks? You already passed.
I think it's in the middle of the park, is it?
Oh, yeah, there's one in the middle, there's one on George that's past the park, you already passed the park, and you're looking behind you, and there's a park.
What was determined when we, can we remember what that was?
We can post it as needed regarding.
Oh, okay.
There's no limitation for distance from the park, I mean, we can do the, if it's, if you're changing, if you're not changing the speed limit, you can post those things before the park, right, Tom?
Where the, wherever.
Right.
The rule is within contiguous to or adjacent to, and because the statute says all three, within contiguous or adjacent, I've opined that adjacent means something more than a budding, and so you can post it, in fact, I would encourage that if we In fact, I would encourage that if we are posting it because of the park, that you do so perhaps, you know, 50 feet, 100 feet, something beyond on Dickinson or George or on Hubert before you get to the park. But it's not necessarily constrained to on the piece of land that is immediately abutting the park. You can post before the park.
So maybe some better signage, whatever that means, whether it's more and/or moving of the sign. Other than that, I would ask you, Randy Meehan, what would be your recommendation from the Police Department for this topic?
I understand that everybody in this community expects a safe community and wants everybody to go 15 miles an hour on their, on their roadways. I get it. We had 630 calls for service so far this year. We can't be everywhere, but we can address things that we know about. We have identified some things on this little snippet of a survey here, and in my opinion, if we address the concerns with Elm Drive, is it's my opinion that most of the traffic that is speeding down Dickinson comes from there with flyers in their mailboxes, postings on their door, or just having their management speak to them. That would be one way to deal with it. And, you know, there are no speed limit signs on Dickinson, you know? I'm not saying the speed limit sign is the answer to everything because, as we all know, people travel whatever speed they think they should anyway, and that's kind of how the rules of speed are set up. The thing that I can do is when time permits and when we've identified times that are most important and critical for the residents up there, and that being early morning and evening, is I can put some high-vility police presence in that area to, you know, to try to stop some of this bad driving behavior. Writing citations in law enforcement is a tricky business, okay? Especially to people who are coming to work in the morning, but if it needs to be done, it will be done, okay? And that would include the stop sign violations. So then, let me revisit this, and obviously it's winter, but we might have to talk about it again. I don't know if changing ordinances and spending money on signs is the answer, but I do understand that the people who live in that community want a safe park. Maybe start with the least expensive option of flagging it and let us have a whack at it too. That'd be my recommendation.
I think that makes sense.
I don't, I don't think it would hurt to at least move the signage out to where, as Dan said, you can at least see it before you hit the park. I mean, I know everybody knows, in the city knows where it is, but a reminder isn't going to hurt. Like I said, the four signs that are there now, the furthest one away from the park is 14 feet before you get to the park. The rest are in the park or past the park. So just moving a sign maybe, you know, if we made a motion, move them 100 feet from the park to the near, you know, from the nearest corner the park's at, at least we've got some signage improvement, maybe somebody will see park ahead, children that play or whatever.
That probably couldn't be done till the spring.
Right, well, there's not going to be a whole lot of kids in the park, I'm guessing right now anyway, but we just.
If so, we got a bigger issue, right?
We'll do something, yeah. We'll start with something and, yeah, yeah, true.
Parent issue.
Exactly, that's what is, that's the starting point versus going 15 is, you know, just get them signs in advance of the park. So you're, when you're driving, say, a new person, you know, I, we all know where it's at, but new person coming to town, he's like, oh, there's a, wow, I just saw a sign, you know, at least 100, whatever. Tom, you okay with stuff like that?
Sure. I kind of think it's a good reminder for people before they get there that, I mean, we all get flaps in the back that we drive it all the time.
Would that, general consensus, Chris or Bill, to put them signs, it doesn't need a vote at all?
You're not adopting an ordinance. I, I think that, I'm not sure how we established that there was a slow children, because that's the only sign that's there right now is a child at play symbol is what I, if I recall, Tom.
Yeah.
And I, there's, I think that was probably put up at your department's discretion. I don't think that was something that the council directed you to do. So I don't think it takes council action, and my understanding is, you know, you're hearing what's been said this evening, you could do that, although certainly council could take action to direct you to do, do that.
I think I have.
You think you got it?
And I think that having a speed limit sign, even if it's not changed to 15, which I would like to see it changed to 15 around the park as a park zone, but even if it stayed at 25, at least put some signs there. I mean, it is the statute that in a residential area that's not marked, the speed limit is 25, but people forget that, and maybe even just have a sign of some sort there to remind them maybe would help.
Okay, well, we're on the signing of parks. Do we have any on Hayne Road by the park there?
Nope.
Okay.
And the park in Orchard Heights is remote and not on a throughfare of any kind.
So when you're getting them, you want to maybe look and see where else we may need them and, is it about doing them all at once because otherwise we're going to have their neighbors out here next, so.
Tom, is there one up by you, a park sign, at the park or before?
Tom Herschel did provide some information from the Federal Highway Transportation, Calming, Department of Transportation, various entities, and the Department of Transportation really discourages an overuse of these signs because they become, everybody becomes immune to them, so they really don't want you to put signs everywhere because, so you need to put them only where you need them, and that's their recommendation is, it's discouraged by the Federal Highway Administration.
And maybe we don't unless we have some areas complaining, because if I look at it, parks are, they're all different, right? So the park here on Dickinson is totally different than the one by Hayne Road, that's kind of in the middle and a distance away from Stonefield and Hayne.
Right.
So that probably won't be an issue, but if it is, then we address it at that time.
I will agree, I don't think people pay attention to signs because I know if a squad car has been sitting in a 30-minute parking stall for about an hour and 10 minutes right now.
Whoa, guess what, they say you sit there longer than 10 minutes.
Somebody else got me on that one, so.
But I agree though, Cindy, that, you know, each individual park will come up on its own, you know?
Different, yeah.
The Dickinson.
Or may not, yeah.
Different deal on its own because Elm Drive and the church going back and forth, you know, before, after church, whatever, you know? So at least we got the Dickinson thing kind of at least a general nature, Tom. I think he's got it. But I agree, you don't want to plaster the heck out of it.
There is, there is still an item on the agenda that should either be dealt with through a, a motion and second, a motion and no second, or a motion to table. It should be dealt with in some fashion so Cindy has some direction of what we're, what we're doing with item number two.
If there's no motion, either way, it just dies.
Dies. So I just remind you that it's out there.
Can we then address it at a future date?
Yes, if you've not taken an action on it, it's not been denied, yes, you could address it at a later date. You'd have to have a new agenda item, I mean, notice it up, but yes.
And start out at the Public Works level again?
What happens to the first reading that's been approved then?
No, you didn't adopt, you didn't, you didn't adopt the second reading, so it will die for a lack of proper process.
So then it can be revisited in the future without?
This issue could be revisited, this ordinance would not be revisited, if you understand my, my, what I'm going. Ordinance 18 dash 07 would die.
It would die.
And at some point, you know, perhaps 18 dash 11 or 13, what have you, if you choose to retake it later in the future.
Would it be better just to let it die then? Should we take a vote on it?
But I'm saying if there's not a motion, it's dead.
Either way, you can bring it to the floor and vote it down, that's one way to kill it and it's clean, that would be fine. But you're, something needs to be, it should be dealt with. If you want to make a motion and it dies for a lack of second, that's one way, if you bring it up and it's seconded and simply voted down, that will kill it as well.
Or if the mayor says, is there a motion three times? If no one makes a motion, it's dead too.
Okay, there's been plenty of discussion on this item. Would anyone like to make a motion on it? Would anyone like to make the motion on item number two, C2? And one more time, is there a motion to approve the second reading and adopt? Okay. Is that good for you then, Cindy, or you know what to do with the? Okay. I'll write them on there.
Oh, yes, okay, well, number three on Public Works, consider removal of median on Hemp Hill Avenue, which I brought up earlier. No, I just mentioned it.
You guys discussed it, your Public Works last time?
Could you give a slow background?
Yeah. You want to give background, Debbie, or?
Would you like to do it, Ramona?
Um, I can.
Do we need a motion on this one before we can discuss it?
No.
Well, you can get background, but it's, sometimes, obviously, a motion will be necessary, whichever the council prefers.
Unless a motion is made and it dies.
Well, I think we've had just background, right? Can we have just a little bit of background and then we can make the motion? I mean, is that suitable?
Yes, that is permissible.
Because we got, we got people here from, we want to talk.
All right, the Public Works Committee discussed, at the request of a citizen, the removal of the island on Hemp Hill. The committee discussed various reasons why the island was initially installed. Some of those reasons that were listed in your staff report include, there was a very contentious debate when Hemp Hill was extended. Hemp Hill did not exist and connect to the highway for many years. When there was conversation about creating that plat and constructing that street, there was much concern about safety on Hemp Hill because it would become now the most convenient cut-through from the east, from the west to the east, east to the west. So based on those concerns from the citizens who attended those meetings, the plan commission adopted a construction, a final plat with construction plans that included the island, it included a very narrow street cross-section in the new part of Hemp Hill, which is significantly different in width from the west end. So in order to calm traffic, to alert travelers to the changing width of the road, there was a stop sign installed and the island was installed. So that was the reasoning behind the island and its installation. So at the committee level, when the committee talked about it, many residents attended. We don't have a survey of the entire street because many people on the street weren't in the meeting, but the people that attended wanted the island removed and did, there was a lot of concern again about speeding on that street. So then it came, it's now here for consideration at the council, and in the meantime, the residents have come forward with a statement in writing indicating that it wouldn't cost the city to remove it, that they would cover the cost of the removal.
Thank you for the background.
At this point, can we hear audience or do we have to make some kind of a motion first? Looks like there's some people here to talk about it.
Going to take comments and then, okay. All right, we will open it up to the audience for their input and again, speak your name and address for the record, please. Start.
Josh, we got a bit 708 Doty. My main concern with this entire thing is I think it's going to set precedents. You accept money from the public in the form of a donation, in quotes, where is that going to end? I mean, I can handle your previous issue right now and just give you 50 grand, remove the park at Dickinson, if that's going to be your logic. So that's my main concern, I guess my main concern is in ethical form.
Thank you. Alana?
Hi, I had a list, Joanne went down Burr Hapton Street and Sharon collected comments from Burr Hapton Street. I was going to log on Friday night, Saturday, and whether it was, we don't know what, whether it was, so did you want to refer to these names or is it just enough to say that we did contact more of the people on the street than that were here? And they're all for the removal.
If that's being presented.
Oh, they're for the removal, okay.
It's going to have to be put into the record.
So we will take them. What's, Dan, Dan?
I have a tap property in 404, 424, 4 Hemp Hill. And my, I'm for removing him because if somebody parks, I, it's only happened two times, but when I look through there, I had my trailer behind me, if somebody happens to park the head too far on the street, the only parking ones I have, she's like, you want to deal? To get past that, that could have that point on the wheel up on top of the curb to get around the car that's parked there. You know, and I understand that because we got four houses there now and no parking for any four of the houses on the side, because we only parked on one side in the first place. So I grant, I'm not going to pick up too many parking spots, but anybody pummeling people's houses, they can't get in the driveway, they got to go down the street and park them, somebody else knows. Not only that, I think it just is kind of a suggestion.
Sarah.
I guess, hey, Sarah Brown, 112 West Bold Street, that was, you answered part of my question. I guess I just wanted to understand why it wanted to be removed in the first place when the, when it was put in to begin with in order to kind of keep everybody in the neighborhood safe from injury to death. I'm just curious what the reason is to remove it.
I can't set a time to, and the people that live on the street, they have no parking in front of their houses at all.
Are you concerned at all that you might have some issues with traffic if it's removed? Because that's a possibility.
No, because there's a stop sign. They have to stop, there's a stop sign. And they think that by ticketing some of the people that are consistently wanting through a stop sign and so on, maybe then put a patrol car out and ticket some of the people who are offending it periodically. You notice if there is a police car parked on North Pass and I don't know where it's passing, people do stop. But, you know, it's just, if nobody ever says shame on you, you shouldn't be doing that, then you can do that.
I think if there was some tickets written for either spot, word gets out. People will start respecting the stop signs a little more, especially if you get a couple of kids at lunchtime. By the end of the day, they're all going to know about that kid getting that ticket, so it might be something that we can do a little education. Jonathan?
My name, Jonathan Fry, 606 Doty Street. Really just going to echo your sentiment. I, I understand in an empathetic view your reasoning for being here, but I do think it is inappropriate that the city would accept private donations to enact a change in transportation or Public Works. I agree with Josh that it is a precedent that should not be set because once that is opened, where would it end? It might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, but it does set precedence. And if this is something that you wish to actually see done on your street, then it, then it must be done, then it should go to the proper channels to be done, but money should, or labor and time should not be accepted to complete a project like this.
I was, I was just going to ask, is the traffic flow through there materialized from what they thought it would be when they put that street in? I don't, I mean, I'm not up there a lot, but like I see the traffic flow that people had envisioned because it goes nowhere, goes down Blaine Street, you know, I don't, hasn't really developed a police car, that probably tell me more than to blow that, but it hasn't yet. Police cars, they probably found even more than that, but it hasn't. But went from nothing because it wasn't there. Whatever goes down there, so...
14 years later, there's got to be traffic. Is this public yet, or us everybody, just public? It's not open to us yet for discussion?
There's not actual...
Motion on the floor yet.
I was going to say, there's not a public hearing on this, so there's not... It's not inappropriate.
Well, I'd like to speak when I can.
I was going to say, we can still... Okay, go ahead. Mark, you.
I got a few issues here with this. Mainly what I heard from people coming in is that it's ugly, it's an inconvenience. Those are the two main things I've heard. And it's prone to accidents and also that it creates an issue with the snowplow. So, number one ugliness is, you can throw that right out the window. Safety ain't always pretty. So, regarding snow plowing, I spoke with somebody who lives on Hemp Hill Saturday morning who had no issue with it. So, they were discussing the no parking signs. So, I went to pull on Hemp Hill to go look at the no parking signs and see how they were arranged. And the street hadn't been plowed yet. And ironically, a snowplow turned off on the main street right behind me going up Hemp Hill. So, I pulled on the North Pass and I got out and stood right in that intersection and watched the snowplow go through. And that snowplow went through with the wing down and it went, took one swath through there perfectly. No issues whatsoever. Completely cleaned that street in one swipe. So, the snowplow concern, I'm throwing out the window. And another one that was brought up is accidents. So, I pulled a, the accident reports of that street over the last 15 years since that end was put in. There was three accidents in 15 years on that street. One was in front of 749 Hemp Hill, which is at the old part of the street, nowhere's near the...
740 is in the middle of the new part.
Okay. I got them switched down. Yeah, that's in the middle of the new part, nowhere's near the island. The other two both occurred in front of 418 Hemp Hill, which is at the other end, nowhere's near that island. So, for somebody to say that it's prone to accidents, that's irrelevant because it ain't. Three accidents in 15 years on a street that ain't nowhere's near that island. And the other issue I have, again, is what I'm really hung up on is the money thing. For somebody to come in and say, I don't like this, it's ugly, I want it gone, it's an inconvenience, I'm going to pay for it. I'm not going to be bought. There's no way. That's what really bothers me with this thing. And as far as the inconvenience of two people having to go one way on that street, one of those people just built the house there, is currently building a house, knowing the island was there. So, now you're going to build a house and say, okay, now I want this piece of infrastructure to go away because it's an inconvenience? No, I don't buy that. Head Street's a one-way street. Everybody that pulls out onto Head Street has to go one way down Head Street. So, are we going to turn Head Street into a two-way to make, you know, because people don't want to have to go the opposite direction to get off of Head Street? No. So, I just think this is... It's just, I don't get it. I just simply don't get it. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, the issue came up that we were going to talk about where we were going to get the money from if we decided to remove it. I think that it was a very generous offer from, what I understand, a local company that has done work for the city before. And I also understand that there's been other instances, maybe I'm wrong, where companies have come in and helped with projects that have gone on in the city. I think that this was a very generous offer. And I would like to make a motion.
Well, I think we had a couple more people. Jim, you...
Motion can be made any type of a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we remove the island on Hemp Hill. We accept the generous donation of Mrs. Fox and Mr. Webb, along with their neighbors. I guess that's all I got.
Sir, a second. Hold on a second. Chris and I ran around Plan Commission that came up back in 2003, 2004 and so forth. Schultz came in, Larry Shorter and all the whole bunch and stuff, and Dead End Street, cul-de-sac. And it went on for almost a year, it seems like it did.
Matt, could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Anyways, there's a lot of discussion over about a year or two up there and so forth about that. First, it came up with stormwater control up there. Someone mentioned about putting island to maybe, to choke down the stormwater that's coming downhill. So, that topic came up and the city engineer says, it came up where we put a big detention basin just on the other side of Subway. All the water runs down, hits into the inlets and it goes into the big detention basin just north of Subway, or west of Subway. I actually wanted a fence around it, but anyways. So, the island came up because of a lot of issues, possibly increased traffic and so forth. I don't know who designed the island. If that was me, if it was island, I drive up Madison, I don't see islands that wide. There's probably some up there. I drive every street in Madison, especially on Monroe Street and all that stuff. You get a couple little bumps here and there, ripples in the road, and there are some islands where they're about five foot wide. Jonathan, you know Madison pretty good, probably. See other ones, islands that are bigger. I don't know who designed it, but I wish it was a little bit narrower. Just, that's just my viewpoint, as I'm saying, good or bad. So, that's how it came on. It was through a lot of dialogue, putting the cul-de-sac in there. And with Dr. Long and a Subway guy, I think they sold some land to the city and the road went through to the Piggly Wiggly, you know, instead of Dead End. So, that's how the island came up. Now, who designed it? I don't know. I looked at the meeting minutes too and stuff. It must have been the Van Duwan Associates out of Madison.
They don't design those things.
Okay, who designed it, you think?
I don't know.
Okay. So, someone designed it and I looked at meeting minutes and a lot of stuff came up with stormwater and it started from there and the island came in and so forth. But, you know, I've driven that, you know, 14, 15 years myself too, and it don't make too much of a difference to me, but a lot of people came up and said, you know, I talk to people up there too. You know, they live on the street and just wanted it down, you know. Sometimes, I'm not saying this is going to, what's going to happen here, but sometimes cities do certain things and it tears down the line. Maybe it wasn't the greatest thing that we designed, or maybe it was too, you know. I can look back 25 years, back in early 90s, been up there doing this stuff. We designed some things that go, shit, I wish you would have designed that different. Jim says very correctly too, sometimes you put islands in, you know, good guy here. You normally don't take them out, you know. I don't know if Madison takes them out or not. You know, I cruise that, you know, probably not. But that's the background on it that I can recall. I was involved with that decision back in 2003 and 2004, Chris and all of us guys. But it seems like, you know, Josh, you mentioned you about private contractor coming and doing that, you know, that wouldn't want to switch my... That does, you know, it kind of, you know, upsets you. But I can't think of any specific thing, but I know that we call people in, something comes up, hey, can you guys get in there without bids, you know? And we pay for it.
That's a totally different circumstance. That's an emergency.
Exactly, exactly. I'm getting to that. It is totally different thing. But we call people in to do jobs for us. It's a little bit different than this, it is.
Are you considering safety because you're moving something ugliness?
No, no, no. That is no problem with me with ugliness and stuff like that. But it's the island that came up and that's where we're at now and the people came down. And I, is there any people in the back that want to comment on this? And then I'll stop.
I think it's unfair to characterize generosity as something other than something that people are of low intentions and trying to help solve the problem, trying to make sure the money doesn't be a barrier for what would otherwise be an appropriate decision. When I look at that island there, I guess my question is, if we really think it's a safety issue, why is it like the only one in town? Maybe we can use it on Dickinson Street. If it's a safety issue, maybe we should put it in there, but I just don't receive it that way. If anything, it narrows the street even more. I think that, so I don't understand the safety function of it. And again, I think that bears out the fact that it's nowhere else in the city, doesn't really prove that it's a very effective means.
I think it's the only place in the city where a street narrows from one width to what that is to narrower width. It indicates the narrowing of the street.
Hey, Joe's a circle coming down from the church. Hold on, hold on. I've been wanting to ask this for quite a while and maybe this is a good segue.
Do you sign that says street narrow?
Yep.
But whose yard would those signs go in? The people that live along that way?
One at a time. Yep.
Andy?
I was very surprised at how large that was, width, more the width. And is that, was it built like that because the street widened? I mean, I don't know the history of it. So, when I drove past there, I was surprised at how large it was. So, I was wondering about the size. Matt, you talked about it. I didn't get a good answer. I mean, I don't know if you didn't know or if somebody does know the background of the size of the median and the exact reason why it was put in. So, those are two questions I'd like an answer to. And then the third one would be more a legal issue bill as far as, is there any type of legal issue for accepting private funds for doing something like this?
No, I don't believe that there is. Municipalities are empowered to accept donations for a variety of purposes. You see it for building of a public structures, whether it be a courthouse or a library or a park, that that happens. I understand the concerns that does that smack of the rich being able to buy their way to a particular result. One could make that argument, I suppose, but from a legal standpoint, there is nothing illegal about accepting that for a particular purpose.
Thank you.
I have one, actually...
I think Jim had answers to my other two questions.
Well, no, I just, I'm just... Somebody else stole a lot of my thunder, Mark. Thanks. But I did, I mean, I did, as Matt said, this has been going on for a long time. I did the research too. This went on from August of '03 to July of '04 before. Several people in this room, including Ron, Chris, Matt, and even Joanne Fox, voted in favor of that island at the time. Now she wants it out. But I appreciate the fact that you said it's hard to get around. That's the idea, to slow people down coming from the fast, the 44 feet to the 28 feet. 14 years ago, there was a lot of discussion on Hemp Hill and the development. It went from what type of development, some of these people, they went around and around on no duplexes, no this, no that. Then it came up to cul-de-sacs. They wanted cul-de-sacs on either end. There was a discussion on whether they were going to have a go down the main street and put a cul-de-sac, or come up the other way and a cul-de-sac because they didn't want cars to go through. It was a big issue. Cul-de-sacs got shot down. I know they were brought up at both sides from different, even the mayor at the time. They were shot down because they were going to lose too many lots. The developers, Schultz and those guys were going to lose too many lots because the cul-de-sacs had to be too big. And we had the right of way, correct? City already had the right of way?
Yeah, we did not have to acquire the property from Subway or from Dr. Long.
Right. They couldn't acquire the property. It was going to cost too much one way or the other and the other guys were going to lose too many lots going up the other side. So, that was shot down. The next one was put a median all the way down it. Part of that was due to the flow, which they decided, Public Works said it wouldn't affect anything. They put the retention pond in, which if somebody wants to donate a fence, sounds like Matt would be accepting of that.
There we go.
Take a donation for the fence around that. It is ugly. The final plat involved, in motion and second, by motion by Ron and seconded by Joanne, was to put in the island, the median. 44 feet to 28 feet, the new block is actually goes down. At the time, think about it, it's the only one in town, it's a revolutionary idea 14 years ago.
What plat are you talking about?
The final plat that was agreed upon for Hemp Hill extension, for the road extension.
Hemp Hill Street Commons subdivision?
1726 or...
I have a copy of the plat right here. There's no median in it.
It was...
Plat, that's not a construction plan?
Oh, you said a plat.
Right, well, plant, okay. It was...
The plat is what's approved, but it's, the construction plans are part of the plat approval, but that, what you have in front of you is the plat and the construction plans are in the office if you want to see them. It was all, it was all part of the conversation. It's noted in all the staff reports, approved by the Plan Commission and Council that that would be part of the construction of the street.
So, here's my point. It was a revolutionary idea, it is a little one, but it does, it is there for a direct traffic flow. It's there for a reason and was put in for a reason that has not gone away. 14 years later, we're attempting to do away with it because it's ugly or because some people have no parking, which they moved there with no parking. That was, that was there. They're building a house there now, I'm sorry, but that was there when they built the house. Anything's changed over the 14 years. It's the traffic has become much greater now. We've had zero recorded accidents, as Mark said, which we also checked, zero Public Works issues with no signage being replaced, not getting down by, knocked down by cars, plows or anything else. What's changed is the people living down in the area, some of whom voted for it but do not want it there now because it's ugly or inconvenient. Inconvenience is just a part of what makes it safe. You go around it, you slow down to go through there. It's inconvenient, yes, I agree. But that's just part of the whole idea. Ugly, spruce it up. Make a donation, put trees, plants, shrubs, flowering, whatever you guys want to put in that. We'd be happy to talk to the tree board, take suggestions. Tom can put whatever lasts through the winter or whatever you guys want to do with it. Make it nice, make it look purty. I kind of tend to agree. It ain't purty. I agree with you. That's a fact. But that's just not, ugliness is not a reason to do away with something. I'm not here to say, don't take donations either. I'm not here to say that at all. If you want a donation for a fence around the pond, you want a donation to purty that up, spruce that up, I'm all for it. You could put, sure go a long way on that island with the donations that they're trying to right now, but everyone knew the median was there when they built, bought, moved, whatever. However, they got there, they all knew it was there before they got there. If we didn't take, agree to take something out, just a safety issue just because it's ugly and convenient or free of cost to the city, then I, again, don't think we're sending a very good message for the rest of the residents of the city. Just because it wasn't in the budget, they don't get something?
One thing, Jim, there are actually two other ones that I can think of.
Oh, are they? Okay.
Business Park.
Oh, yeah.
And then Brailsford Junction Way.
And which one?
Which isn't developed behind that yet, but...
Oh, yeah.
Just past the Olson Farm.
Okay. Guess nobody, because I don't go there, I don't...
The one at the Business Park has got the site in the middle of there.
So, it is, that is something that is put in, people. It is something that is put in and it is put in other cities and elsewhere.
In this document that I mentioned earlier regarding the highway transportation, state and federal, I mean, one of the things they list as traffic calming measures are islands. So, they're done in lots and lots of cities, they're becoming much more common, so it isn't, it's not an unusual solution to try to calm traffic.
And I guess what it boils down to with me is what's changed?
Is that your argument that it's common?
Well, what, the idea is it's, nothing's changed in the bad sense to take out a safety issue and it's something that's being put in because it's done for that reason. Nothing's changed except the traffic flow has picked up or people are moving the area to don't like it. What, you know, the reasoning there by the four people sitting in this, or three now because Joanne's on here, that did it, hasn't changed. Maybe their ideas of it have, but...
Is it not necessary to begin with?
Alana?
Alana?
So, Jim, I understand what you're saying and I understand that my best point was not to say that it's ugly, but if the stop sign is right there, why can't just little ugly eyes or come out? You know, when you see the plans, when it was in the planning stage, I had no vision of that to look like that. And I had talked to her a while, maybe four years ago. She said, if you want to build on the street, one of they dump the rocks and plant grass, find and maintain it fine. Well, after the worst, they don't want to do that. So, but you don't consider the stop sign enough of a deterrent to get people to slow down? You really think that the little island where the nick go and narrows is what stops people from speeding?
I don't say that the stop sign won't work, but people pulling out of that stop sign having, you know, that extra 50 feet to go 35 miles an hour are not going to be, you know, slowed with that open.
Stop signs will be stopped without slowing down and narrowing them a little. I realized it was a new thing and everybody was so worried that the kids were going to speed down it.
There was a lot of concern.
But they still speed down it, whether they're narrowing or not?
It's an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
That's an enforcement issue. The island is, the island is still doing something, obviously, because it's inconvenient and tough to go around. So it's gotta be doing something. Well, that's what she said earlier. Hard to go around.
Okay, I have a couple of questions and another comment. First of all, how far is it from the stop sign to the island? Anybody know?
Seventy-five feet. Seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet?
How much?
Here, I gotta, let me look right here. It, I'm gonna say it's about a hundred, a hundred feet.
Usually, lot depths are about 60 feet.
Yeah.
So it's not that far.
I'm gonna say it's about 100 feet.
And the night that we had the Public Works meeting about this item, the house was filled. There was not one person in favor of keeping the island. Everyone spoke against it. And I'm wondering, how many people, Alana, do you have on your list that are for it? Yes, I guess we would like to see it.
Well, you only sent letters to Hamp Hill. Who'd you expect to show up?
Just curious if you had, like, how many people you had that are for it? And if you found anyone that was against taking it out?
Deb? Last week you had this letter sent out to the exact same people.
Right.
Two people showed up.
Because a lot of them are here. And a lot of them are on this list.
And just to say for the record, that night, you also had South Main Street. Half the people here were for South Main Street, not just Hamp Hill.
That's true.
So you did not have a household of Hamp Hill people.
Okay, so we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. There's 12 on this list. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 people on this list.
And they're the only ones that travel that road?
They're all for removing it. And my sentiments were the same as yours in the beginning before, when this issue first came up. The first thing I thought was they moved there knowing that it was there. But I think we've clearly heard the people that live on that road. And they're all saying that they don't want it. You know, maybe there was a mistake made years ago and they don't want the island there. There's nobody that's come forward and said, yeah, let's keep it.
I've heard, I've spoke with people that have no issue with it staying there and live on Hamp Hill.
I, I have too. Just because they're not here. How many people here want it? How many here want to keep it? Okay, there's four.
Debbie, you still got the floor? I mean, she said no one interrupting real well. Every time you talk, someone interrupted you.
Yes.
My God.
It's true.
You know, I spoke, Candy spoke, Mark spoke. No one interrupted them. You spoke, you interrupted three times.
I pretty much am done. I said what I've had to say. I believe that the people have spoken.
I mean, sort of.
It's very clear. No one wants the island that lives on that road.
Sarah.
I'm just still unclear as to what the actual reason, solid reason is for removing it, other than not wanting it. I'm not, I'm not saying whether or not I'm for it or against, but if something was debated and put in for safety reasons as a city infrastructure. And there's also a solution where you could take money that people want to donate anyway and improve the appearance of it. A community garden is a good way to go about that. You could even grow vegetables if you want. I mean, that's a, that's a big thing in some communities. I mean, there's a way to go about it. I mean, if it's really a safety concern, I'm sure in the first place, I just don't, I haven't really heard exactly what the reason is for removing it.
Have you driven by it?
I've been on Hamp Hill before. To me, it doesn't, I've been on that road before. I just, it doesn't stand out.
It's extremely wide for the area. You can barely get through on either side.
That's, that's actually not my point. My point is, is it was obviously voted on as something that was gonna be put in for the safety of the residents of that area.
And as years pass, people have found that maybe there was a mistake made.
And what's the rea, what's the actual reason to remove it? If it was put into something for safety, what's the actual reason?
Requests from the residents.
So are we getting too hung up on it doesn't look good? I don't know. The residents need to, the people on Hamp Hill. So to me, you know, this is what I have heard and I have received phone calls too, is that it's difficult for some of the neighbors that they're, the people that live right there where the median is to get out of their driveways and to be able to go down the hill like Piggly Wiggly or Subway. They have to go up and around. Now inconvenience is one thing or it's, it hinders how I can get in and out of my driveway. To me, those are real speaking points versus I think it's ugly and I don't like to see it. So those are things that I think we need to hear. I mean, are we, and maybe it is just the ugliness. I don't know. But I think too many people both ways are kind of addressing, oh, it just doesn't look right.
That's a valid point.
So some of the things I heard were real valid, valid reasons. I can't even park in front of my har, my house because of it, is what I've heard. So.
My name is Brooke Carroll. I also live a few times while I'm driving because we are the people who are building houses on Hamp Hill right now. And we're living on that basement waiting for that to go. Just kind of speaking to what Candy said, it is going to be very, very difficult to drive in and out of our driveway if, like you said, the road is paved with powder right away. How, how are we not supposed to run into it when we're backing up? Or if the road is icy and my back tires slip and I'm gonna run into a median in the middle of the road? I guess if we, if I want a garden, I'll grow one in my backyard. If I want, you know, grow vegetable, I'll grow it in my backyard. But I don't think it's necessary to spend money that we could use to make all the residents of Hamp Hill happy and ruin the island on something that's just not necessary. And so from a resident and a person who we do keep talking about the person that's building a house, from our perspective, it is going to make our life very difficult. And yes, we thought a lot knowing that that was there, but it is gonna make all the residents happy and everyone's agreement. And there's no cost to the city that Joanne Fox has been so generous by donating it. I just really don't see why there should be this big of an issue on it. And I just think that you should, you should rather remove it.
Thank you.
Candy, you know how many homes are affected that have to come out and turn the opposite way to go around that?
Just two.
Two, two. And one guy actually has to go across just a little bit of route.
I, I get that. I'm just telling you, I heard even if it's the one, the two, the three, or the four, they're addressing it. That's, that's what their issue is.
Okay.
So to me, it's not a, a little bit of it's the amount. But I, I guess I'm trying to really determine, is it the look of it or is it the inconvenience of it? And I'm just hearing very mixed messages tonight. And the phone calls I have received is about the inconvenience of it. And it's about, we can't, even if we have people over to our house, where do they park? I mean, we heard this on South Main too. Not the median, but the whole parking issue. And I think it's important that we take some of that into consideration when you're a homeowner and you're living on a street is, you know, is there parking? Is there adequate parking? That narrows, so there's one side of the street parking. I don't want to, I don't want to base my decision based on the beauty or the lack of beauty of something. I, I find it very important to, for my vote to be based on, is there a need or is there not a need? So that's why I'm just trying to figure out what the real issue is.
My observations are that there are three widths from end to end on Hamp Hill. The west end is one width. The east end is a different width. And there's a third width right there at the median. And that would be pretty much the same either direction. So that is a functional thing. It's not a aesthetics thing. Another functional thing is the immediacy. There are four properties that are affected immediately by it. And that would be for backing out, coming out frontwards, having to turn to go around the median to go the direction they want to go. That would be another functional issue. It's nothing to do with aesthetics. And I'm also throwing in that the balance of properties on the entire street don't have the benefit of that immediate impact. They're merely indifferent or taking a side. There are very few that would abstain from comment on that street. Then there are peripheral properties. The one on, the ones on North Pass and the ones on Sweeney, if they had a say in the matter. Because they are users of the street. Maybe aesthetics don't bother them, but function does. So I am at the point of not having the basis to form a vote either way. And I know it's in the district I'm representing, but I have not heard a single voice other than the, the voices that were gathered physically in the form of the letter, the response. So I'm just saying for the purposes of input, not having a say one way or the other. There's a street in Milton that joins High and Madison. And I don't recall if it has a median running the entire length. I know that there is a cul-de-sac and it has a median running the entire length, but it doesn't connect to Madison. It only connects to High. And I think there are reasons for that. And I think Milton anticipated the traffic when they put the median in. So I think as far as median serving a purpose, it's always a functional one, not an aesthetic one. And that's what, what leads me not to have a vote one way or the other on this, but to want all of the voices concerned to, to share what their concerns are. And so far, I don't know that there are concerns on the part of Sweeney property owners or North Pass. But I think that they would have about as much say in it as someone on the west end of Hamp Hill.
I heard Head Street mentioned in the conversation earlier. Head Street's a one-way street with no parking on either side. So talk about your inconvenience for parking, but.
Debbie in here next.
Two lanes. And it's two lanes wide.
Right.
All right.
I guess my, my, two, I'm gonna make two comments and I'm done here. It was again, just stated that if we tear this out, it's gonna make everybody on that street happy. That, that's baloney. I've spoke to people on this street that, that have no issue with that island. They're not advocating we get rid of it. So for people to continually say that you're making, that everybody on this street wants it gone, that's inaccurate. Plain and simple. And second, if, if somebody came along with money and said, I think all the stop signs in town are ugly that serve, that are there for the sake of safety and say, I'm gonna remove them all. I'm gonna pay to remove all the stop signs because they're ugly. Do we all sit here and say, hey, okay, good. You're gonna pay for it. Let's get rid of all the stop signs and see what happens?
I think what crimps that is the functional discussion versus the aesthetic.
Yeah.
And the function would trump the aesthetic.
That's, I'm making, I'm making a comparison here.
I see your point. And I, I realize that there is leverage on the part of someone who would be indifferent if it didn't impact them. But as soon as it impacts them, they're not indifferent anymore. And I think that the, the split between functional and aesthetic is, is a smart one. And I don't think that the, I don't think that the silent voices are going to remain indifferent if this were to appear in the paper as an article. Someone would form an opinion where they had none before.
And you say impacted versus not impacted. Again, we've got people in the room who voted for it, but now that they are impacted or they live down the street, they don't want it. So.
So I, I see what you're saying with that. But I also know 14 years, it sounds like, have come and gone. I have been known to, oh, I want this. But then many years later, oh, I changed my mind. That happens. I mean, that.
But the reason hasn't changed that was put there. Just the mind, the mind has changed.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at. What was the reason? And I didn't even get a straight answer, what was the reason for putting it in? I heard a couple of different things. I heard maybe speed. I heard maybe some water. I don't know, Matt, what were you?
That's a little bit that I read, something about water and all of this.
You know, so.
The idea of the water thing was, suggestion before was for to leave the road the length and put that in and for safety. And then it would be water, what, for the, what do you, what's the word? Flow retention, water, whatnot. And they said that if, oh, an entire island, if you left it 44 the whole way, an entire island, the whole length, wouldn't matter. Wouldn't affect, drastically affect the water flow. So they said, you know, because that would have been a safety issue and a water flow. So that said, wouldn't matter. So they decided not to make it the whole length. The safety issues were the traffic and what, like I said, they wanted cul-de-sacs. They didn't want the road going through at the time. It took a year for them to agree.
What cul-de-sac are we talking about?
Well, at the meetings, they were talking about, well, Chris, you probably, you're mayor, we were mayor at the time.
We were looking at both, either end of it.
Something that happened 14 years ago. Things have changed so much.
These were just ideas that they didn't, to create, to stop the traffic from flowing and that, and, you know, was, was not to make it go through, put different, you know, different ideas through. Once they decided it had to go through because that's a city had the right of way that.
Okay.
Then they came up with, okay, we'll put an island in.
I see.
To deter the traffic or traffic control.
It may have had an imprudent measurement taken in the amount of constriction that's going on in each direction. If you look at the divided street in Stoughton, right off of 51 going south, it's up on the, the high ground before you go into the river valley. But I don't see a lot of pressure to remove that boulevard running down the middle of that street. And there's ample width enough to have parking and traffic in each direction. And I think that there may have been an imprudent width involved here, but I don't know that that dictates one way or the other.
So, and this is more of a, I don't know if you call it regulatory or whatever. It, for, so this came about from residents on Hamp Hill. Is that correct, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay, and then it came to Public Works. I'm very intrigued by what a couple of you have said, Dave and Jim, both about other residents in the area. So what is the process of the city sending out a notice? And I don't know what the range is for streets or neighbors around that area to say, you know, there will be a discussion on the possible taking out of the, the median on Hamp Hill. And we want to know other people's, you know, we need a discussion on it. I'm just trying to further the, the fishing net, if you will, because I, you had mentioned something very interesting that.
The Sweeney and the North Pass would have an opinion, but that would only be formed after, after having seen something physically out there.
But if they're noticed and they don't care to come to a discussion about it, then. But if they're noticed and they don't care to come to a discussion about it, then.
Yeah, whether it's in the form of a newspaper article that raises every one of the possible voices, gives them an opportunity to speak, I don't know that that's the, the only way. I know that physically soliciting for the input would be based on the appearance of use, and if someone lives on Sweeney, it's just, it's an assumption that they use Hemp Hill to get eastern.
Well, and what about the, the other residents down Hemp Hill?
And the others also on, on land, and they also.
Right, right, I'm sorry, what?
They did receive a notice.
They should have received two notices, one before the Public Works Committee meeting, and then one before today's meeting.
Okay. I do understand, as Jim mentioned earlier, that there's only a couple of people in the crowd about this issue tonight, but it is an extremely cold night, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't have to. Just saying.
But you have an opinion, and if you had a big enough opinion, you'd get out in the cold.
Yeah.
Am I right? You're here. I'm sorry, thank you for being here. Yeah, you're here.
Things change at 14 years. 14 years ago, when this was on paper, drawn up, assumptions were made of how it would work, it looked good. It was put in. Now it's being used. 14 years later, it doesn't look like a very good idea to the people that have to use it every day. Things change. You build a new house. How long? You live in that house, can you start thinking, ah, I wish I would have done something different with this. I wish I'd put a closet in here, over here on this wall. Different things. On paper, you've got people here voting for it with the assumptions of how it was going to work. It looked good on paper. Now some of them are living with it, the community's living with it, and the ones that are affected by it most don't want it anymore. I think those are the ones you gotta listen to, who it's affecting the most. Versus 14 years ago, for whatever reason it was put in, it was assumed to be safety. Well, there's no accidents there to contribute to the item? I don't think so. It's a straight shot. Stop signs stopped, and either way, it's straight ahead. If it was used to calm traffic, like Brad said earlier, does it have new streets put in town? Does it have new streets to be done? It's never come up as an issue to calm traffic. Lane Street was just done. We didn't calm traffic there. The south end is narrower than the north end, but we didn't put anything there to calm the traffic down. We have stop signs. I think you need to listen to the people that are using it. Some of those people voted for it on paper. Are they realizing, or was it a mistake? Is that what they think? Maybe. But now it's been used. You need to be listening to the people that use it.
There is something too, as I look at this, I, and I always think of another aspect of safety. If there's driveways that it's difficult for vehicles to get in and out of, what would it be like for an ambulance or a fire truck? I mean, there's, obviously, there's driveways here, an ambulance could not get into the driveway to help a patient. Now, yeah, you could park on the street, but I think we all know, I mean, there's, depending on what the call is, that could be an issue, too.
What can ambulance get in?
You cannot get into the driveway and then, and then pull out afterwards and get out. There's not enough room. I don't believe there's enough room from the end of the driveway to back it out and go, but.
I don't see that.
We're talking bigger vehicles and, you know, something to think about.
If someone had a boat or a trailer or something that they had to back out, there's no way they'd get in and out of there.
I noticed, Dan.
I've seen movie vans up there, going up to Yell Park, drive up, where they have to, they drive on top of the island to get to me, and I don't think I don't want to drive them, not safe. And they're big ones, and they drive right up on top of the island and get up the driveway because they can.
Well, yeah, and your taxpayers' dollars that's paying for that fire truck and that ambulance, I don't think you want them driving over that. I mean, and then causing an alignment issue and so on and so forth, but that's just something I'm passionate about.
While I do hear the argument that the snowplow had no problem, I believe that's the case more than 99% of the time, that the snowplow has no problem. But there is an impact scar on the island, and that is when the blade is lofted by the gradual curb and then comes down, it really smacks at heart, and that's what fractured the curb in one place. I can't say that that happened in the other direction, I only saw it in eastbound. But to the point that emergency vehicles would have a tougher time for those four immediate properties, I think that is a valid concern. I don't think that people on Bel Air, though, would, you know, that's far enough away to be considered, okay, well outside of the survey perimeter, but at what point do you draw the line? At what point do you let democracy prevail? And instead of just doing a free-for-all and blanketing the whole city with surveys, at some point, you have to limit the sources of input. And I think the immediate properties would have the most say in this case.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, we're gonna cut off the discussion here and.
She said, she noted from a parliamentary standpoint that Mark wasn't recognized from, to have the floor to make the motion to call the question, and point of order requires a second and a vote on the call of the question and two-thirds majority. But.
To call the question, his motion, it's a motion to stop debate, needs a second, and you need to vote on that.
Second.
There was no second, so.
There isn't.
Would have failed.
I think Jim just seconded it.
You just seconded it.
Okay, now we're good.
Does Deb still have the floor?
No, once the question's called.
No, the question's been, the question's been called, seconded, vote on that, no debate on the call of the question, two-thirds.
Two-thirds to pass.
Two-thirds pass, and then immediately, if it passes.
Can you do it by a show of hands?
Then it goes to the original motion.
That goes to the motion.
Oh, so the first one we're going to call the question.
You're voting on ending debate.
Yes. Okay, you're gonna vote on the end of debate by a show of hands. Anyone that wishes to end the debate, raise your hand.
Two-thirds.
Unanimous. Okay. And the motion is to remove the median on Hemp Hill.
And accept the donation of funds to pay for it.
Okay. Do we have to have anything kind of security on that or anything?
Uh.
End of the debate, so I guess I can't ask that question.
It seemed to be a contingent motion, so it's, removal contingent upon receiving the funds from the donor is how I would interpret it.
Okay, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Epstein.
Davis?
Yes.
Well, next?
No.
Verdict?
No.
Motion passes, three to two with one abstention. Okay, thank you all for coming down. We're gonna continue on the, on the agenda here. There's a little bit left, if anybody wants to stick around for a few minutes, so.
Please do.
Not, not too much, so. Anything from the tree board?
Nothing to report.
Anything from historic?
Um.
Other than there's two, two open seats on Historic Commission, if anybody wants to get involved.
Yeah, we have a full house, but that's a good idea. Come on, folks.
Appropriateness were issued for properties in the Historic District.
Frequency of meeting?
Um, as needed, not very often. But I told that to some people that put on the police commission, and they got really busy. Uh, redevelopment authority, we.
Nothing, we, we took care of it earlier, right, with our most intended financing.
The grants there. Uh, Police Commission.
Nothing to report.
Mayor, other person in the staff reports. I got a few things here. Casey's General Store opens up Thursday.
Wow.
Cafe on Main, they're gonna open by the end of the month, according to the leer, and I would like to thank those involved with removing the holiday decorations. Candy, Mona, Mark, Jim Capellan, Red Davis, Tom Fegustad, and Larry Johnson. Did I miss anybody from the park? When we did the park?
I think so.
I think I got everybody. That is all I have.
Thanks for your help also on the removal of the decorations.
Yep, you forgot yourself, Mayor.
I don't put myself on the list, I get stuck on enough of them.